This public meeting of the Gloucester City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minutes shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. This evening, we have with us City Councilor Dylan Benson, Ward Two. We have Valerie Gilman at large, Councilor-at-large, Frank Majota, Ward Four Councilor, Councilor-at-large Jeff Worthley, and Ward Three Councilor Marjorie Grace. And we have next to me, we have the City Clerk, Grace Poirier, and who is? And we have no one who has joined us online yet. And now, I would like to stand for a flag salute, and Councilor Gilman.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
Oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Please come up, state your name and address for the record. Is that microphone on?
Can you hear me now? Hey, Jeff. Debbie Leakos, 41 Woodbury Avenue. I come before the council tonight because there was a very bad incident at Good Harbor Beach today. Within a half an hour of me arriving at the beach, two middle-aged gentlemen were pulling a man out of the water, and he was drowning. So I ran down, I helped pull him out of the water, we initiated CPR. There was not a lifeguard close by, he was patrolling towards the island. And we had no pulse, he was totally unresponsive, and he was full of seawater. I initiated CPR, rolled him on his side, got the water out of his lungs, and we repeated this process at least six times and got a pulse back. And by the time he left the beach, he was responding. And I'm sorry if I'm a little shaky, it's been one of those adrenaline days. It's been a tough day, and I'm very emotional. Lifeguards came, it was a group effort, there were lifeguards there. My concern is, is that on our end of the beach, down by the Good Harbor Beach Inn, we do not have an AED on the lifeguard stand. We do not have a flatboard to lift people out of the water. We have a surfboard that can go in deeper water, but we have nothing at the shore to get people out of soft sand and get them onto the hard sand. And I had the same incident happen to me, the exact same spot, two years ago when revived my brother-in-law. So it's history repeating itself. So we need better coverage down on our end of the beach. We request that the lifeguard stations be better separated. One lifeguard did say to me that they've been counting on the Brian Eck Association privately-hired person to keep an eye on our end of the beach. But he's not there until probably the first of July, maybe on weekends coming, I'm not sure. But that's not his responsibility. As I got this man, finally got a pulse on him, and got him breathing, he did open his eyes. We didn't think we were going to be able to save him. But I held his hand, and I'm going to cry, because he finally, I said, "Look at me, I need to let you know, you need to let me know you're with us." And he looked back at me, and I gave him the biggest kiss on the forehead. And it feels good to know that we saved somebody. But we need better safety measures on that end of the beach. And we also need a Mobi Map for those people with disabilities who are trying to get down off the ramp on Withem Street. I've been asking for once for quite some time, and they seem to be getting all on boardwalks one, two, and three, and we get nothing on that end where a lot of people who have disabilities may be trying to access the beach. And the last thing I will say is that the lifeguards did a great job for what they could. Our young girl, Missy, had, you know, it was her first event, she did an outstanding job. But we need better coverage, and I'm hoping we can get that equipment, we get enough money off these parking lots, that we should be able to provide an AED and a board and better coverage on that end of the beach. And so, I'm hoping that can happen. This poor guy was being dragged through the sand, and if we had had that board, he wouldn't have had the injuries to his skin that he sustained being dragged through the wet sand. The last thing I said was before I was, I'm happy to tell you that he's awake now, out of town, and he is saying that, "What happened to me? I walked onto the beach, and the last thing I know, I'm here." So it was a good outcome, but we can do better. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for that. Yes. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Susanna Altenburger, 66 Atlantic Street. About a month ago, I showed up here waving this monster white paper. It's a local collaborative effort on what's gone wrong in the fishing industry. One and five pages, 32 ounces of weight. It compresses 31 years worth of damage the industry has suffered, the port economy has suffered. I did all your follow-up. You have it in your inbox as of now. So take a look at it, including your spam filter, hopefully not in there. What you're receiving is a compressed executive summary. I will not plague you with this beast. Very few people ever read this, only lawyers and policy freaks will dive into this. They may want to really read this. In this week of the Fiesta, and a week after your budgetary consideration, a final leg of that, take a peek at the cover letter. The city has spent several decades, and by now, well over a million dollars on harbor plans that have never really addressed the issues that are in here. So take a close look at this. I propose to maybe even for you to consider to give a presentation before this council, because this issue has actually never been discussed. I should also send you, I did not do this today, the petition that 60 local businesses and fishermen signed a good while back. Those folks are all disgusted with what has happened. So you should see that as well, and you will. And so I hope you take this seriously. The issue does not go away, 31 years is beyond embarrassing. My late husband and I noticed in 2002, June of 2002, we've been at this for 23 years pro bono, never ask any fishermen for any funding. And I think it needs to be fixed. It's too embarrassing, it's too stupid. We can fix this, actually. We can fix an awful lot of things in DC. We cannot fix a zillion things in the country, but here, this problem we can fix. Local initiative, local wherewithal, and you folks have a strong role to play. Madame Poirier, I learned French, her name is Poirier. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annette Dussette, I live at 23 Eastern Ave. I'm Italian. Hi, my name is Annette Dussette, I live at 23 Eastern Ave. I've been there for 30-plus years. I have a safety concern with Eastern Ave from the intersection of 128 and Main Street, East Main Street. The residential area, and with the new school, there's a lot more traffic, more kids, and we have trailer trucks that go by there, 53 footers. They're very big. They go fast sometimes, up around the corner from Main Street, coming up around, going back to the highway. They come off 128, they come down the road. My house is not far from the road, and it shakes. And I can imagine what other people's houses do. Trying to cross the street, it's very difficult. You have to really, it's every man for himself when you try to cross that street sometimes. I just think that maybe if we try to put a sign better on the extension, the 128 extension, so a driver can see it. Right now, there's one, it's covered by trees, not very visible. Just think of yourself driving down the extension, and what are you going to do? You're going to stay to the right, and you're going to take that right off. The little signs that say, "Truck driver's straight," it's hard for them to see it. If we can put a sign there with a light on it or something, to give them a couple warnings instead of just one when they're there, it's too late for them to switch lanes. Also, the speed limit sign. If we can get a speed limit sign on Eastern Ave on both sides, cars go up, cars up the hill, they come down. I know there's an officer there during the day for the school that is stopping people left and right for not going, for going through the stop sign. I hear it, nonstop. So I know that he's doing that. Maybe they can do the speed sign also, to help cars slow down, especially going around the corner, there have been accidents. I have a question regarding the painted white lines. They start right at the bottom of Fair Street, they put the new lines in after they paved the road for the school. They start, they didn't go all the way down, Eastern Ave. Is there a reason why they didn't go down? Can they put them back? Then just the crosswalk on the bottom of Eastern Ave, that goes across to the park, and if we can get the tree trimmed a little, so at least cars can see people, and it's very difficult. I walked my dog the other day, guy didn't see me.
15 seconds.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Sure, didn't mean to shut you off. Well, thank you.
I do have a couple pitches, can I leave them?
Sure can. Give them to the clerk, and they'll pass that along. Name and address for the record.
All right, good evening. My name is Megan Goddard, I live at 15 Eastern Avenue, a few doors down from Annette. And I'm here tonight to speak about an urgent public safety issue affecting drivers, pedestrians, and especially the children near the area of Eastern Avenue and East Main Street. Specifically, the three crosswalks leading to Gordon Thomas Park and across Eastern Avenue. This intersection at East Main Street and Eastern Ave is extremely dangerous. It's a blind corner in both directions, and although there is already a painted crosswalk there, what's missing are pedestrian-activated push-button signals. On a daily basis, families, my own included, have to stand and wait for traffic to fly by, hoping someone sees us in time to stop. Often, drivers don't see us until the very last second, slamming on their brakes and nearly causing rear-end collisions. It's only a matter of time before someone gets seriously hurt or worse. We're asking the city to install push-button-activated crosswalk signals at this intersection. The infrastructure is already partially in place with the painted crosswalks, it just needs the tools to actually make it safe for people to use. In addition, we request the installation of a speed detection device at the intersection of Eastern Ave and Cross Street, one of those signs that displays the driver's current speed to help remind motorists to slow down. These devices are proven to increase driver awareness and reduce speeding, especially in high-risk areas like this one. We're also asking for roadway lane markings to be painted in this and surrounding areas. Without them, drivers often drift too close to park cars. In fact, several vehicles along these streets have been sideswiped or totaled. This isn't just property damage, it's a warning sign that we need clearer boundaries for drivers before a pedestrian becomes the next casualty. This isn't about convenience, it's about preventing accidents before they happen. It's about the kids walking to and from school, it's about the parents pushing strollers, the seniors crossing the street, and the everyday residents who deserve to feel safe in their own neighborhood. Please, let's take action now. Let's invest in the push-button signals, the speed detection signage, and the painted lines that will make this area safer for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one person online, Mary Ann Boucher.
Hi, can you hear me?
Boy, can we.
Thank you. Mary Ann Boucher, 93, Mount Pleasant Avenue. I actually was going to speak, or keep pushing, to have the new East Gloucester school site, which was traded with the Meadows Field site, to push for that, to be added into the comprehensive plan for 2025, to be protected and preserved. That can wait for a later time, because what I've just listened to reminded me of what happened last week when my husband and I went to an event over at the new school. We turned, we came from East Gloucester, went up the extension, turned left, onto Eastern Avenue, and a child was going across the street. I literally put my hands up to my ears, to my head, in fear that this child was going to be hit by a car. Not a crossing guard, not a police officer, no one. And that happens often, and I do not understand. I have, you all know that I have followed this project since its conception, and I do not understand why these people, these neighbors, have to get up and ask to have the protection that should already be there. We have more than 440 students, the school was built for a maximum of 440, I believe there's 470 or close to that. You know the traffic, I know the traffic, but the children are most important. I will always get up and speak for the children, I'll put everything else off for the children. Please, please, you are the leaders of our city. Please listen to the women that, I don't even know them, but please listen to the women that spoke before me, and do something. And I also want to say, thank you, Debbie Leakos. I heard the whole thing on the scanner today, and she is spot-on. She is spot-on. We need to stop being proactive instead of reactive with all these things. The sirens have been going all day. Thank goodness for the emergency personnels that we have, but we don't need to see another accident on Eastern Avenue. We don't need to see someone being pulled out of the, out of the water down the beaches. So thank you for your time, and please take into high consideration the people that have spoken previous. Thank you.
Okay. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The consent agenda.
Would anyone like to remove anything from a consent agenda? entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Six in favor and three absent. Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
That would be, well, the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report, there is none because there was a holiday, so the next item is the June 16, 2025 Ordinances and Administration Standing Committee Report.
Councilor Grace. Believe, he wasn't, were you there?
No.
Then no.
I'm sorry, my apologies, we skipped something. The next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
Correct. That went on here. Go. Hold on a second, Maggie. Motion first, sorry.
Committee recommendation on a motion by myself and seconded by Councilor Nolan. The Ordinance and Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend that the city council appoint Maggie Debbie to the Gloucester Historical Commission, term to end on 2/15/28, and I so move.
Second, I'm sorry. Motion made by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Maggie, would you like to speak to it, to your appointment, or?
I appreciate the support of the committee, and I look forward to...
Oh, the microphone.
Sorry. I appreciate the support of the committee, and I look forward to being part of the commission. I think it'll be really great.
And thank you. Questions from the council?
As we talked about in the meeting last week, just thank you so much for being willing to give your expertise and your passion to something that's so very important to this community. We are so eternally grateful to you. Thank you.
Councilor Gilman.
Maggie, mostly from being such a good volunteer for generous gardeners, and you're always there, and you're dependable, and I'm grateful that you've put your name in the hat to represent this important board that we have. So thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Worthley.
Thank you. Whoa, that was loud. Maggie, I appreciate your volunteerism through the years, and especially for the Historical Commission. It's a very, for a group of people who are typically overlooked in some ways, have a very important role in the city, especially when it comes to preservation of the things that are so important to everybody. So I can't explain why this is, doing this, I apologize. Thank you for serving, and I look forward to your work. Thank you.
Is it, oh, did you, nope. Oh, okay. Yes, thank you, Maggie. You bring a wealth of experience to this position, and we're very lucky to have you. And I hope you enjoy serving the city in this capacity. Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Six to zero, three absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Heidi, would you like to come up before we move to recommend? Thank you. I think they may need two microphones. Dylan, you might have to hand over your microphone.
Where it's on. This is from a memorandum of the, from the Arts Cultural Council, Arts, Culture, and Events Coordinator to appoint the city of Gloucester co-poet laureates Jay Featherstone and Heidi Wakeman, and we will hear a little bit from them before we make a motion to appoint.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jay Featherstone, and I am very pleased to be the co-laureate with Heidi, and I have nothing more to say.
Hi, my name's Heidi Wakeman, and I'm very proud to be here with my co-poet laureate. And we actually did co-write a poem, if we may share it.
Please, please do.
And this, I will just say, not only is being co-poet laureate new for Gloucester, both of us had this new experience of writing a poem together. So it's the first of many firsts and a successful collaboration. This is called Owl Nest, or House Warming. A couple of weeks ago, I and three grandchildren and my daughter Liza put together a nesting house designed for baby owls. The house was easy for my grandchildren to construct, but then we faced the puzzle of where to put it. It has a large, open front door, big enough for an adult owl, maybe two, the size of a bag of flour nestled in between the muscular trunk and graceful arms of the red oak. This box is built to host the owls, screech or great gray, barn or bard, who knows who would show up and make their nest? Yesterday, I glanced up and saw some small brown birds flying in and out. They looked about the size of a Carolina wren, but moved so quickly, I could never be sure. After a time, tiny fledglings crack open eggs, clamor for sustenance from dedicated parents settling into the neighborhood, taking their place in the circle of baby and child and parent and family. And what does it matter that it was an owl house? We welcome you from other flocks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was beautiful. Now, we will have the motion.
On a motion by myself and seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend that the council appoint Jay Featherstone as the city of Gloucester's co-poet laureate, term to end on 6/2028, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Gilman. Question? Heidi, or?
I just, I had the pleasure of being part of the committee that chose these two wonderful people to represent the city of Gloucester as the co-poet laureates. They made our job much easier, because trying to determine who we were going to choose out of these magnificent humans was not easy, and they came up with the notion of being the co-poet laureates. So we thank you as a community for your beautiful words and your amazing experiences that you share with us with those words. Thank you.
Councilor Benson.
Thank you, and thank you both very much. I want to first say, I was very moved by both of your poems that you read out at the pride flag raising, and speaking to the community, and speaking to the needs of the community, and the wants of our community, and wanting to continue to be an inclusive community. I was very moved by that. And as we see attacks against the community at the national level, having both of you speak such powerful words to what our community stands for was very moving to me. And Heidi, I was very moved by your, part of your reading at Juneteenth, and reading in Spanish at the, we were reading the Fourth of July from Frederick Douglass. I was, again, very moved by you reading that in Spanish and really trying to... in Spanish and really trying to speak to that there are many Spanish speakers in this community, and I know that you also teach Spanish at the high school. So, both of you, I really want to thank you both for stepping up and deciding to be co-laureates here. This is a very powerful message to the community, and thank you again for that poem as well for the community as we all come together.
Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you very much. The senior center isn't quite the Ed Sullivan Theater, but I felt like we might be experiencing the next Lennon McCartney with Wakeman Featherstone. That was a beautiful poem, and I appreciate sharing it and being witness to that. I don't know you, Mr. Featherstone, until now, so welcome, and I look forward to working with you. And Heidi, I've known you now for a few years. You're an excellent teacher, you're an excellent advocate, and I appreciate that you're using your voice here too, to support the arts and promote poetry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Council Gilman.
Thank you. I know both Jay and Heidi pretty well. Jay, for quite a while, probably 16, 17 years, I've known how dedicated you are to our community, how eloquent you are with everything that you support. And I'm just so proud that you've put your name in the hat to be this important co-leader. And to Heidi, great teacher, chair of open space. We've known each other since soccer days and with our kids, and really grateful that you've put your name in the hat to do this. So, I thank you both.
Anyone else? I too would just like to thank you. I hope that we have more occasions to have you celebrate your talents with us. I think we have two votes we have to take, but we'll take them one at a time now. And we've made one motion already for Jay, correct? So, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Six to zero, three absent.
On a motion by myself and seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend that the Council appoint Heidi Wakeman as the City of Gloucester's co-poet laureate, term to end on 6/2028, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Worthley. I think we all said pretty much everything we were going to say. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Six to zero, three absent, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Please do. I'd like to announce that we have the Harbor Master Chris Lucido on line. Next order, Business Madam Clerk.
The June 18th Planning and Development Standing Committee report.
Council Gilman.
We just have six matters just to announce. No action. We did four permits for National Grid. We permitted special event for the Innes Grom Seafair on July 26, 2025, for street closures. And we permitted the request for street closures for the Gloucester Fisherman Horribles Parade on July 3, 2025. We have two public hearings scheduled on July 8. One is for Walker Street, number 26, map 239, lot 12, and another is for Gould Court, number 8, map 15, lot 88. And that too will be on July 8. And that's it for that matter of business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask a question about something that was in that report. Obviously, it's not for vote, but it's for information, but I'd like to ask a question about that information, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, and Council Gilman, I don't expect you to have the answer because it's probably more of a National Grid question, but I'll throw the question out to you. Put sidewalks in that require ADA compliance, and I think in some cases it's three feet on both sides for a wheelchair to pass. And then regularly, we have telephone poles that get put right in the middle of those streets, causing people to have to go into the street and sometimes get jammed on one side. I just remember when my kids were little, trying to push a double stroller and realizing it's hard to do that. I'm not sure if there's a specific one of those that you approve, but when National Grid puts in a pole in the middle of the sidewalk and it changes our ADA compliance, does that mean that we're out of compliance? Or does that mean they're responsible for... I don't know. It just feels like we keep... Not we, as in this committee, the city in general, keeps permitting National Grid insurance every city, and they're putting things in that make it harder and harder for people to walk on some of our sidewalks. If you can't address that, that's okay. I can put it as a request to the mayor to see if he can answer that, or if National Grid could.
I don't think that any of us here are qualified to answer that question, so...
Do we know if these that were approved are in sidewalks that might impact accessibility?
Let me just repeat that. I would just say that that would be a request to the mayor to look into that and not something that falls under our purview of these poll petitions.
I guess the question, though, is, do you know if the permits for some of these were approved at P and D for polls in sidewalks? Right? So, I remember when I was at P and D, we have a map, and there'd be a drawing, and then we'd vote on that. And I'm not blaming any counselor for approving it. I'm just saying, do we even know where those polls are going to be?
I don't think we can answer that right now. And I would say that we did get a commitment that they're not going to do this work until after the summer because we asked them that. So, I would say if you ask the mayor to give you an update on that, that would be the most important thing. We did bring up Liberty Street in terms of the issues, and we just made a comment to that, and they noted that that was something that they would look into. And we said that Mike Hale has come up, and he's marked that, something that both Council Grace and Dylan did together. So, we did that, a little bit out of order with grid. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, we added, and actually I spoke to National Grid and reminded them to, when they are tearing up streets, tearing up sidewalks, to repair them back to the condition they were in. And that, of course, has not happened in the past. And I will note, since I have some experience working on these in my previous job in Beverly, that if we don't approve grant of location, they can go to the state and get grant of location for that. So, just so we understand that. And that has been... That's happened a couple of times in Beverly where the council voted against this, against, say, a grant of location to put a pole or a grant of location to put wiring, whatever it may be, and they went to the state and they were able to get that grant of location. So, just so, I think it's important that we can, we understand, and I appreciate, Council Worthley, you asking that, and I will leave it at that. But again, I think it's on all of us, when these come before us, to remind National Grid to repair the roads back to the condition they were in. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you also flagging the thing, what we saw at Liberty Street. It was brought to your attention first, and then we brought it to the attention of the administration. So, thank you.
Problem that's all over the city.
Right.
Streets littered with them.
All the way Bayview.
Yep. So, I got three on my street, and it's tiny. But anyway, let's move on.
One at a time. We have to address...
Okay. Next order, Business Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 25, number 21, special counsel permit 2025, number four, Prospect Street, number 14, map 25, lot 77, for a change of use to convert a commercial use into a seven-unit residential section, residential use, section 2.3.1, number eight, and special permit for lesser lot area and open space per dwelling, 3.2.2 footnote A in the R5 district.
Like to open the public hearing? Would you like to come and speak in favor in front of this crowd? Name and address for the record.
Attorney Megan Breaker, 96 Middle Street, Gloucester. If I could share my screen, I have a presentation.
I'll have to turn around. All right.
Is that easier?
They don't have any... Well, they can see from over there. You can see that.
I'm happy to put it somewhere else if that's easy.
No, 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 you're fine.
Okay. I could share my screen and do it? That's what I'm... Okay, sorry.
No, just share your screen. He can watch it on his computer, too.
All right. So, as stated, my name is Megan Breaker, Rough Cline Gardner &amp; O'Connor, 96 Middle Street, and I represent the applicant, 14 Prospect Street LLC. The applicant's requesting special permits for a change of use to convert from commercial use to a seven-unit residential use. In addition to that, it is given the size and shape of the lot in the building. We are required... We need lesser lot area per dwelling and lesser open space per dwelling. I was trying to see if I... There we go. Okay. Just a little bit of information on the property, 14 Prospect Street, you have map and lot number. It's located in the R5 district. It was formerly the home of the Amets Post 32 for several years. It was purchased in May of 2023. Since then, it has sat vacant. Manager of record of the property owner is Dio Braga. The proposed renovations, we're proposing that we're to renovate the entire interior of the building, which would allow us to create the seven residential units. Five of the units will be two-bedroom units, and there will be two studios. There will be minimal exterior changes, and there will be no expansion of the building footprint, nor will there be any changes to the topography of the building as it is currently. On December 12th, 2024, we went before the zoning board in order to get dimensional relief. Again, there's going to be no changes to the exterior of the building, so these were all because of the size and shape of the building and the lot that we needed to get them. We needed a special permit to exceed the maximum building height, which was not even half a foot, and then variances for lot size, lot width, front yard setback, left yard, left side yard setback, and percentage of vegetative coverage. The decision of the board was five to zero, granting all relief requested. I would like to note that at that hearing and meeting, it was our intent to actually do eight units instead of seven. After feedback from some of the abutters, we took that and internalized it, had a meeting, and decided, in order to meet some of their concerns and some other concerns that the board had suggested you may have, we lowered it from eight units to the now seven units. This is the exterior layout of the building. There's going to be set... You can't see the parking. I will show you that on the site plan. But there will be seven off-street parking spaces, one for each unit, which is required by the city. There will also be a dumpster with a fence that's fenced in in the back corner of the right side of the lot. The parking in the driveway will conform to city requirements, and in the back of the building, there is currently, as you can see on the existing west-left elevation, you can see that there is a small bulkhead. That bulkhead will be removed in order to make room for the parking space, and the back door will essentially be, as you can see in the existing north-rear elevation, it will just be flush against the building. The first and second floor emergency egress, as you can see, it's going to start in the back of the building and then take a turn down the side left of the building in order for them to exit. And then the emergency egress will be where that bulkhead door was, but will be flushed to the building. Front windows will remain in place, the side, the left side of the building, as it was there, that's where the emergency exit was on the first and second floor. We will just be converting those into windows. It's very difficult to see, but where you see the side of the buildings, all the windows that have words in the middle of them, that's existing to show there's only two windows. That will be added. So, the only exterior changes will be that, those two windows, the bulkhead, and then the emergency exit. In addition, there will be plantings in the front and side of the building along the driveway. This is the site plan. I apologize, that's really not conducive to trying to blow up onto a PowerPoint, but I wanted just to utilize this so that you can see the parking spaces in the back. The space in the back red, that's where the dumpster will be, which will give the trash removal company the easiest in and out of the property so not to disturb residents and be able to access the trash easily. Before I get into the breakdown of the units, I do want to address something that I think may be a concern and that we had plenty of discussion during P and D, which is the size of the units. They are small. They are all large enough that they meet the city's requirements. But I do think that there is a real issue in the city and in the general North Shore and maybe even Massachusetts of an affordability in a housing crisis. I can tell you, on a side note, aside from this work that I do in my practice, I do a significant amount of landlord-tenant evictions. It is insane the amount of people that are being evicted because they cannot afford their rent, and it is crazy to me to see the amount that landlords or the debt landlords are having to incur because tenants can't pay. Unfortunately, the issue becomes with these larger apartments, you have to have larger rent values. You have to have, in order to cover the expenses of the property owner, they have to charge very high rents. I'm seeing market average rents at 2,300, 2,500 for one-two-bedroom apartments. That's, to me, absolutely out of control. And even the programs that the state has created in order to help tenants that are in financial difficulties, they aren't covering enough to make them meaningful. And so, we're sort of in this habitual circle of a crisis where there's no... There's not enough units available, but then there aren't enough affordable units available. And we've got to try to equalize it, which I think this project does. You've also got a lot of people who can't afford to move out, you know, young people, they can't afford to move out of their parents' houses. They're living in the basements or staying in their childhood bedrooms. Or I'm also seeing, you know, someone will rent an apartment and then move in 10 friends because they can't afford the rent. We've got to try to stop this crisis, and I think that projects like these really do support that. They are small, but as I said, they do conform to the city's requirements. So, this is the basement. There's only going to be one unit in the basement, and I have broken down the square footage of everything. I'm not going to go over it word for word. There's also going to be a laundry room. The laundry room will be accessible to all tenants. It will have three washing machines and three dryers, and then there will be a storage area, and that will be segregated for each unit. The elevator in the building will remain. The first and second floor almost are identical to each other. The stair, the new staircase will be in the middle of the building so it can be accessible to all residents. There will be two apartments that are each two-bedroom on either the left and the right side, and then the back of the building is where the studio apartment will be. As required, one unit of these will need to be affordable, which our client obviously intends to create. That would be a deed restriction. And in addition, just to come, you know, make sure everyone's aware, we're not looking to charge $2,500 per unit. These are going to be affordable units that are lower than average market rent that people can afford. All of the two-bedroom units will have one bathroom and a combined kitchen and living room. This is the third floor. Again, you can see, the only difference with this, I apologize, is unit five, there was a bit of empty space, so we were able to create an office in the front of the building, and that will go to unit five, so that will be the largest unit. And I should have mentioned, I apologize, my client intends, one of the affordable units will be one of the units on the first or second floor, and it will be one of the two bedrooms. It will not be a studio. All right. Just quickly to go through the different requirements, social, economic, or community needs served. I think I've hit on that as well. needs served, I think I've hit on that as far as the housing crisis, traffic flow and safety. Property is located in a high-traffic area. This was previously the Amvets, people were coming and going late at night, parking however they wanted, having, you know, there were events, lots of things going on there, so we believe this will actually lessen the traffic. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. Prior use indicates there should not be an issue regarding the use of utilities. Driveway and parking areas are within the requirements. Property is also located downtown, for people who do not have cars, they're easily able to get to the train and other, you know, places around the town. Neighborhood, character, and social structure. The R5 district allows for this, and I think that if you drive down Prospect Street, you'll actually see that it's primarily residential and they're primarily multifamilies and they're a lot over four. So this conversion is definitely more in keeping with the neighborhood. Qualities of the natural environment, unfortunately, the property is already completely paved, we're not creating any more of a hardship on that area, however, we are working within the confines of the property as is. Potential fiscal impact, increase in income to the city through taxes and increasing the available housing stock within the city, also an increase in income to local businesses with new residents. It's not in a flood zone, so we do not have to worry about that. Lesser lot area per dwelling and open space per dwelling unit. So the required for lot area per dwelling is 2,500 square feet, and we are proposing 1,150. The open space required is 1,250. We are proposing, because of how the property already exists, it will only be 166 feet per unit. Even now, for the open space, as the one commercial unit, the property does not meet the city's requirements. In addition, there are similar properties that have five or more units that I've listed out, those also all have less than 1,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. So it's definitely keeping with the neighborhood character and the structural density of the area. Granting this relief does not substantially harm the public good, nor would it, the variance substantially undercut the intent or purpose of the Gloucester zoning ordinances. That is my presentation, I hope. Anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer at a later time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? No hands raised? Communications, have we received any communications?
We have not.
Okay, now is our time for questions from the councilors. Counselor Grace.
Hi, thank you, I asked most of my questions at the P and D meeting. But in listening to you, again, reiterating that the elevator will be staying, I'm curious if that, the existing elevator is, is, works well enough to use that, or will it be replaced when you do modeling?
So my understanding is that the entire elevator does not need to be replaced, I would have to, I don't know the exact extent to what needs to, what renovations or updates need to be made to the elevator, but any work, obviously, that would be done would have to be signed off by the building inspector and the city, so it would meet all requirements.
Thank you.
Counselor Majota.
So based on what I heard, is that nothing from the exterior is going to be changed? I mean, maybe just for cosmetic purposes, would things be changed, like, paint, I mean, you're not going to make the building any bigger, you're just keeping everything in, everything within?
The only changes will be, so originally, and it's actually no, we had to, the property owner had to take it down because it was a hazard, the emergency exit used to be on the side of the building where the driveway is, so that has been removed, and then the new emergency exit will be along the back and then side of the building, so that's a slight exterior change. And then the bulkhead's being removed and we're changing two doors into two windows. Besides that, there's no other exterior changes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, could you speak to the potential fiscal impact, and specifically, when the project is going to be restructured inside, there's going to be a lot of construction, do you plan, does the applicant plan to hire local construction workers, et cetera?
Yes, so he will, he plans, and I think historically, he's only ever used local construction crews that do all of his projects, so yes, it will be local construction workers.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, and my other question is, you spoke to, that there are similar, in P and D meeting, you brought forward a list of different area, like neighboring units that are similar in size and similar, like seven units, six units, et cetera. Could you speak a little more to that, just for the record?
Yes, can I just?
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead. Because I think that this will speak to the neighborhood character as you were addressing, and this is something that I'm always considering when approving special counsel permits, so I appreciate this.
I did list them, I did list them out by address, and I would just like to give the caveat that all of this information I obtained was through the city assessor's records. So 83 Prospect Speed, Prospect Street, that's got nine units, four two-bedroom, four one-bedroom, one studio, lot size per square, per unit is 432 square feet. 85 Prospect Street has six units, the assessors, it did not have a breakdown of the unit bedroom sizes, and that lot size is just under 6,000 square feet, which gave me, gives us roughly 981 square feet for lot size per unit. 93 Prospect Street has five units, three one-bedrooms, two studios, lot size per unit is 672 square feet. 95 Prospect Street, that is 11 units, again, there was no breakdown, roughly lot size per unit is 446.5 square feet. 6 Prospect Street has six units, the lot size is just under 6,000 square feet, and lot size per unit is 994 square feet. I don't believe I added this one onto it, but also I had 21 Mason Street, that's got four units, and the lot size is just over 3,200 feet. In addition, there's also Fearsome Park, which I do not know how many units it has, but that is a considerable project.
97 unit, units, and I brought, I just pulled that up, just so I knew, yeah, again, that, that building is over six stories, and it has 97 units with significant parking, obviously, not everyone that lives there has, has a car, many people walk. But again, I appreciate that, and if I may, Council President, also ask, and I asked this at the P and D, is that, obviously, there are seven car, seven cars, that meets the requirement under our zoning, but say, there's some of these have two bedrooms, say there is, say, X unit, basement unit, three, all the studio units hypothetically, obviously, do not have cars, would those spots be available for, say, someone in those, those two bedrooms that say they both have a car, if that makes sense?
Yes, so the extras, let's say that the, the Unit 5 didn't have a vehicle, then that would, that space would be open to other units that live there, it would be on a first-come-first-served basis. We have not talked in detail with our client, but in trying to think practically, you know, wouldn't it be fair to assign that spot to another unit, because then what happens if someone moves out? So really, the, the best way to do that would be a first-come-first-served basis, but obviously, once we get people, provided that you guys approve the project, once we get people in there, if, you know, it depends on who's in there, you know, hopefully, the tenants themselves can work it out, and, you know, there shouldn't be any issues.
If I may, one more, and then, all right, you can come back to me.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, I just didn't want to, let everyone go first, actually, so, thank you for your presentation, you did a fine job. I've been friends with the No Diobraga, he does fantastic work, he is your client, correct? Yeah, so he does fantastic work in the city, and we're grateful for that. My questions are process-related and not to make changes to what you've proposed. This building is in the historic district. Get approval from Historic District Commission?
I did not think that that was required.
I mean, it's in Historic District, right?
And that end of Prospect Street is Historic, I thought it was Middle Street.
Yeah. The entirety of Middle Street up to?
Middle Street.
Middle Street.
Prospect.
I'm sorry. Prospect, you're not in the Historic District.
You just scared me.
Sorry. Why was I thinking Middle Street? Because you said the Amvets, and then I thought the older Amvets, the new Amvets, my mistake. Okay. The building code changed recently regarding sprinkling. Will there be a sprinkler system in this building?
All updated building code requirements will be met, yes.
Is this building in the new TOD district?
I believe it is, yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Within .5 miles of Railroad Ave.
But is it within, is it in the overlay district?
Is it in the overlay district?
Right, that's the question.
I just, I just know what the vote would be.
Right.
Because, and I talked to Suzanne about that, it's a five vote.
Okay, so I was just, the question was, why wouldn't you use that multi-family zoning code to get to this point? It would probably be more efficient.
Three family.
It's three, it's two to three family by right, this is seven units, it's a seven-units multi-family.
It doesn't apply.
I'm 0 for 2. Sprinkling, the, I'm probably wrong before I even say this, but after six units, we need to have a deed restricted, a four-story unit, is that deed restricted?
Yeah, yes, and I mentioned that earlier in my presentation, I'm sorry if I did make
The first unit was going to be, the lower unit's going to be affordable.
No, 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 so there will be a deed restriction, what, I was simply clarifying because there was conversation at the site visit and at P and D, and overall with our client, you don't want to make, the appearance of making one of the studios or the basement apartment, the deed restricted, doesn't appear, does not give the appearance that our client wants, nor did we, any of the feedback that we got, you know, that was echoed. So we will be making one of the two-bedroom units on either the first or the second floor, those will be the deed restricted ones. We haven't gotten to that specific unit yet, nor would we make that public record, given that we don't, you know, we want to protect potential tenants' privacy.
Right, so what I think you're saying is you don't want to give a stigma to someone who's in the affordable unit when they may not be for that matter, or they?
Correct.
Yes, I understand that, thank you for being that sensitive.
And overall, as I said, I mean, all of the units will be lower than market rent, we're, we're targeting these for people in the, you know, restaurant businesses, you know, different, you know, kids coming out, starting out on their own for the first time, people that otherwise can't afford to live on their own or can't afford to live without 20 roommates.
Thank you for that, and thank your client, too, for this. I had one more question, but I think, just give me a second. Give it to Counsel Benson.
Counsel Benson.
So my other question is, the washer machines, they're going to be corn-operated? Okay, and then I'll, I have another question, but I will allow Counsel Worthley to ask this first.
Second. I'm good, if Counsel President, if you're following me next.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I just want to be respectful. And I consider with two, one is, it's got nothing to do with you, we are consistently losing commercial space, obviously, this will be residential, and if there ever need or want for the owner to have commercial use, come back and, and change that back to a multi-mixed use, if that were the case. And then can you remind me, can you go through the square footage of the entire property as it relates to the open space?
So the open space, what is required for the R5 district is 1,250. Currently, just with the one commercial unit, the property does not meet that, it's at 1,164. What we're proposing is roughly 166 per unit. If you've driven by the property, it is entirely paved, but as you'll see in the exterior plans and in my presentation, our client does intend to put plantings as much as he can on the front of the building, he's got great ideas, lovely colors, it was actually brought up at the last P and D meeting, and I agreed with it. If you see his other properties around the city, he really takes great care in the exterior of his buildings, especially how the landscaping looks, so as much as he can put in for plantings, he will, and then obviously, of course, you know, there could be tenants that want to have garden boxes or things like that, you know, as their residence, so.
Thank you, you've answered all of my questions.
Counsel Benson.
Question is, I know you, you won't probably give a number, but you're saying these units are going to be significantly lower than, all of them include, obviously, the, the affordable unit's going to be significantly lower than what's the market rate of these units, but could you give like a ballpark, you're, I know we talked briefly, you said something below 2,000, are we looking at some, like the studio being even below 1,500? Again, these units are quite small, and I just want to get some sort of commit, some sort of commitment on the record. Obviously, this isn't what we're voting on, but this is a concern that I've heard about this project, is I just, what, where, what's the ballpark of what these units are going to be?
So I can't speak to specifically that, as we haven't gotten far enough along in the project, where, you know, we haven't even gotten your approval for them, so I will, I would say that we've had discussions that they would all be below 2,000 square feet, $2,000. What I can also tell you is there is an element of supply and demand, you know, somebody is not going to rent a 600-square-foot apartment for $1,800. So, you know, there's, that's supply and demand as well, that, that our client is going to have to meet, and again, as I said, he's really gearing these towards people who are younger, who are working class, who are starting off and don't otherwise have the ability to pay market rents. And as I've said, again, it really is just such a crisis that we're seeing in the housing courts, on both ends.
I really do appreciate, as, as much as you could answer that, and you really did a great, you did really were, did a great job on that, and I really appreciate you being honest, and thank you. And that is true, market demand, like a 16, 600 square unit is not going to be going for 18 to 2,000, so that's fair to point out, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to, not necessarily any questions, but you're right about the, there being a, an incredible need for this size unit for people, I mean, when I was, you know, a young person, there was, there was a fair amount of these available in Gloucester for reasonable prices, and they, they've since become condos or multiple other different living situations, but they, it, things that are being built new and renovated are not being done with this in mind of this kind of, this kind of size. I do believe the building now, I'm pretty, I remember that the sprinkler system is, there is a sprinkler system in that building right now, and I know that elevators, whether it's renovated and refurbished, it all has to pass an inspection, at least biannually, if not annually, so. That was all I, I had to say, and I think that, you know, that there really is a great need for this kind of housing downtown.
Any other questions? I am going to close the public hearing. Committee recommendation.
On a motion by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Grace, the Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council grant to 14 Prospect Street, LLC, a special permit, Special Counsel Permit 2025004, for the property located at Prospect Street, Number 14, Assessor's Map 25, Lot 77, in the R5 High Density Residential District pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 2.3.1, Number 8, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units for conversion into a seven-unit residential dwelling, and Section 3.2.2, Footnote A, dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses, other than signs, for reduction in the required lot area and open space per dwelling unit. The special permit is granted based on the plans and elevations dated November 5th, 2024, entitled First Floor Plans and Elevations, submitted to the City Clerk on April 14th, 2025, and incorporated herein by reference. The special permits are granted on condition that the applicant comply with Section 5.11, Inclusionary Zoning. Including but not limited to one unit within the multifamily development shall be subject to an affordable housing restriction in perpetuity prior to the issuance of a building permit for any unit. Detailed information regarding the affordable unit shall be submitted Detailed information regarding the affordable unit shall be submitted to the Building Inspector, and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the final market rate unit, the Affordable Housing Restriction Unit shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. This application for a special permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Grace. Discussion.
Counselor, I'd like to amend. I move to amend the motion by adding after the words "dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs for reduction in the required lot area and open space per dwelling unit" by adding as follows. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit, square foot. Required dimension, 2,500. Existing dimension, 8,050. Proposed dimension, 1,150 plus or minus. Granted, 1,350 plus or minus. Minimum open space for dwelling unit, square feet. Required dimension, 1,250. Existing dimension, 1,164. Proposed dimension, 166. Granted, 1,084 plus or minus. As shown on the plan entitled Zoning Board of Appeals, Plan 14, Prospect Street, property of 14 Prospect Street LLC by North Shore Survey Corp., 14 Brown Street, Salem, Mass., dated 6/3/24, and submitted to the City Clerk's office on April 14, 2025, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Grace on the amendments. Discussion on the amendment.
Counselor, may I just state?
Yep.
This document had been duly submitted, and we just felt that we needed to add that data, but this is all part of the record that we made and looked at in open session. So we're just repeating that to be thorough. So I hope you support this amendment to the main motion.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Roll call.
All roll call.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
Counselor Grace?
Aye.
Counselor Gross?
Aye.
Counselor Majota?
Aye.
Counselor Worthley?
Aye.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
The vote? The vote is 6 in favor, 0 opposed, 3 absent. The motion on the amendment passes. Now you're back to the main motion as amended.
The main motion as amended. Move to grant to 14 Prospect Street LLC a special permit, Special Counsel Permit 2025-004 for the property located at Prospect Street, number 14, Assessor's Map 25, Lot 77 in the R5 High Density Residential District pursuant to Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section 2.3.1, Number 8, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units for conversion into a seven-unit residential dwelling, and Section 3.2.2, Footnote A, dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs for reduction in the required lot area and open space per dwelling unit as follows. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit, square feet. Required dimension, 2,500. Existing dimension, 8,050. Proposed dimension, 1,150 plus or minus. Granted, 1,350 plus or minus. Minimum open space per dwelling unit, square feet. Required dimension, 1,250. Existing dimension, 1,164. Proposed dimension, 166. Granted, 1,084 plus or minus. The special permit is granted based on the plans and elevations dated November 5, 2024, entitled First Floor Plans and Elevations, submitted to the City Clerk on April 14, 2025, and incorporated herein by reference. The special permits are granted on condition that the applicant comply with Section 5.11 Inclusionary Zoning, including but not limited to one unit within the multifamily development, shall be subject to an affordable housing restriction in perpetuity prior to the issuance of a building permit for any unit. Detailed information regarding, regarding the affordable unit shall be submitted to the Building Inspector, and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the final market rate unit, the Affordable Housing Restriction Unit shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. This application for a special permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Grace. Discussion.
I have a narrative.
Okay.
Our Planning and Development Subcommittee reviewed Special Counsel Permit 2025-004. We held a site, we, I'm sorry, on May 7, 2025. We then held a site visit on June 5, 2025, attended by four counselors, Gilman, Gross, Grace, and Benson, two attorneys representing the applicant, the architect, and three butters. Returning to Planning and Development on June 18, the applicant answered the site visit questions, and our PND Committee thoroughly vetted the Special Counsel Permit that was being sought. Change of views to convert a commercial building, AMVETS, into a seven-unit residential use, Section 2.3.1, Number 8, 8, sorry, and special permits for lesser lot area and open space per dwelling unit, 3.2.2, Footnote A, in the R5 District. And the Special Counsel Permit was granted on condition that this multifamily development comply with the Section 5.111 Inclusionary Zoning, which would be a market rate deed-restricted two-bedroom unit on the first or second floor, not the basement unit, in perpetuity. PND voted 3 in favor, 0 opposed for the following reasons. The Special Counsel Permit conversion to seven residential units will maintain almost the same footprint as the existing AMVETS commercial building, which was built in 1900 and is consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. In our vetting, PND compared the site with other like multifamily units in the vicinity, rather than comparing it to one or two family properties. This project with less open space and lot area per dwelling unit is keeping with the neighborhood characteristics. These comparable multifamily properties with a comparable open space and lot area include number 6, number 83, number 85, number 93, number 95, Prospect Street, and 21 Mason Street. In summary, at our meeting on June 18, PND agreed that the two, that the Special Counsel Permit 2025-004 fulfilled the criteria under Section 1.8.3 of the City Ordinance as follows, as presented by the applicant. The social, economic, and community needs that will be served by the proposed use is the first of the standards to be applied. There's a high demand for more affordable housing, and the seven-unit multifamily project would help support this need. The owner desires to rent the apartments at a lower rate to help with the lack of affordable housing. The square footage of these affordable rental apartments are 460 to 546 square feet. The required deed-restricted affordable unit per Section 5.11 Inclusionary Zoning will be a two-bedroom apartment on the first or second floor. Traffic flow and safety. This would be less traffic when, when the building was used by AMVETS. The seven-unit multifamily complies with the R5 requirement of one parking spot per unit. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. There would be sufficient utilities, and there would be adequate access for emergency vehicles. Neighborhood character and social structure. The property was consistent to other properties in the R5 District, and there would be minimal exterior changes. Quality is the natural environment. There are no negative effects as the property is already paved over. New rental units would have a positive fiscal impact in the city. Seven small units will help support the affordable housing crisis. Further, the applicant will seek local contractors, and its residents will provide local retail shops and restaurants with more downtown customers. There will be benefits to property taxes, payments. The Special Counsel Permit application meets the criteria of 1.8.3 and is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. And that concludes my narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Question. Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to say first, thank you to the owner of the property, D. O. Braga. I think everyone knows him well. He is a fantastic corporate citizen, and he was awarded many years ago for the cleanest properties of all of Duncan Donut's properties in the state of Massachusetts, outdoors and the property management. So if he continues that trend in his residential units, then I think we'll be lucky to have him doing the same sort of thing at this property. Your, I don't remember your name, I'm sorry. You represented him, what is it again?
Megan.
Megan, Megan, you represented him very well. I appreciate that. Oh, he's been a major employer, and he's also been a very generous donor to many, many nonprofit organizations in our community. So that alone wouldn't be a reason to say yes for the permit. He meets, this project meets all the requirements outlined in our zoning code, and I'll be supporting it. I do want to draw attention, unrelated to the actual vote, is that there are a number of zoning board relief that was granted for a building that wasn't changing. And if you recall, there was a proposal from the council, on the council last, maybe two months ago, to remove the requirement that they get permits for things that they're not changing. But I just want to draw attention to that. Anyways, I'll be voting yes, and thank you for hard work on this.
Anyone else? Counsel Grace.
Thank you. I'm just going to kind of like, just give a little Reader's Digest version of what Counsel Gilman went through. There's no doubt in my mind that this is going to be an asset to this community. And, you know, geared towards younger people who are trying to start, get a leg up and a start in life, but also for people that might want to downsize, to free up other homes, larger homes, for families to be able to go into. So it's a win-win for every situation, you know. It's consistent with the neighborhood. It's going to be far less traffic than what was the previous occupant of that building. And Mr. Braga did not only check every box, but he goes above and beyond, excuse me, with everything that he does. You know, the pride that he takes in his property is noticeable. And, you know, I am 100% behind this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Benson.
Oh, this is on. So thank you, Attorney Breaker, for all the detail that you put into this. And also, I want to thank your office for also working with neighbor, neighbor, neighbors as well, with that being butters, who had expressed concerns. My constituents were very appreciative of that. I will be supporting this. At that same, in that same breath, I will also say that I've heard from constituents the concerns of the sizes of these units, and the desire that these units will be well below that $2,000 mark. And I am glad that you pointed that out with supply and demand. A unit that is 600 square feet is not going to be going for 1,800. And I know that this is something, and I will speak to this as the only one up here that doesn't own a home, that this is something that a lot of folks are struggling with. People, young people that are not able to be able to get out of their parents' home because there is no units available. I have friends right now that are struggling to find apartments that are affordable, like one-bedroom apartments being $2,000 a month. It's outrageous, and this is an affordability crisis that is staggering here in this community and beyond. And hopefully, this along with other projects that come down the pipe line will help alleviate that concern and really bring about more affordability. And to Counselor Grace's point is that if folks that are looking to downsize those units come online, and more of those units that come online will be able to see, hopefully with supply and demand, home prices will go down as well. So again, I will be supporting this. My only ask is that hopefully, as the project is being constructed, that you continue to be in communication with the residents around the neighborhood, letting them know when there could be disruptions with noise. And obviously, this won't be happening at midnight and stuff like that. So again, that's, my only ask is just keep the neighborhood informed. And, and that is really one of my asks from constituents that had expressed concerns, is just letting them know when the project's happening, et cetera. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Grace.
I just wanted to say one more thing, that I really hope that this will sort of encourage other developers and landlords to maybe take a look at what the need is in the community, and not just what the, the bottom line of, you know, profit is. And it's a huge need, and this is a huge, huge thing to, to gear it towards people that are struggling the most. So I really hope it starts a trend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Gilman?
Say it. Aye.
Counselor Grace?
Aye.
Counselor Gross?
Aye.
Counselor Majota?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Worthley?
Aye.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Vote is 6 in favor, 0 opposed, 3 absent. The motion passes.
Next, order of business, Madam Clerk.
I don't think Braga would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is Public Hearing 2025, Number 27, memorandum from the City Clerk regarding proposed increase to dog license fees.
Going to open the public hearing. Those speaking in favor? Madam Clerk.
All right, so this is part of kind of a citywide review that various departments have been doing of city fees. As you know, other departments have been coming before City Council for reviewing their fees and proposing increases. So dog license fees are the fees in the City Clerk's office that have fluctuated the most. And I'm proposing that we return to the pricing charged from 2006 to 2013. It's actually 50 cents less than the fee charged from 2006 to 2013. I'm also proposing an increase in the late fee from $10 to $20. And this is consistent with higher late fees charged by Beverly, PBD, and Salem. And lastly, I'm proposing that all license and late fees and arrears for a previously registered dog be charged to the owner. Currently, we only charge for one year in arrears of a previously licensed dog. This is steep, but it is avoidable, and it is consistent with other past due payments, such as excise tax, property tax, water bills, et cetera. As these fees won't go into effect until 2026, now is a good time for the council and the mayor's office to get the word out that dog owners can get their dog registration up to date with the current fee model so that they won't get hit hard in 2026. So these fees, if voted on tonight, I'm asking that they not be effective until 2026. That gives, you know, plenty of time for public service announcements and just education of dog owners in the city that there's, it's never too late to come in and license your dog. You will get a late fee for it, but it's going to be a lot worse next year if, if you don't do it now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone to speak to opposition? None? Do we have any communications?
We do not.
Questions from the counselors? Counsel Worthley.
Grace should bring this to our attention. Did I hear you say we're going to go down in price? Or are we going, you said returning to the price from a period of time? Can you explain that again?
Well, we're going up in price, but going up in price is bringing us back to the fee that was charged in 2006.
I don't understand that. So we did go up at some point, and we're going back to it in person?
So in 2006 to 2013, we charged 2250 for a dog license plus postage. In 2013, that was lowered to $15, which we've maintained. And so I'm requesting that we go back to not 2250, but 22 dollars. Well, actually, it's 20 dollars plus $2 for the postage, for the processing fee that we charge. So it's going to be 22 dollars for a not, for a neutered dog and 23 dollars for a non-neuter dog.
Second question was, as I-
The point in my bringing up the fact of the, the fee charged from 2006 is it might be a little jarring to people that it's going up like that, but it's a fee that they were paying in 2006.
Right, so it sounds like we're keeping, we're not even keeping up with inflation. We're going back to a price that we had a long time ago. The second question was, and I think I may have heard it right, but I could be wrong, that if someone has, doesn't register their dog, they incur a late fee, and if they go number of years without registering, currently, they only get charged one fee for that one year, even if there were multiple years that they didn't-
We are able to capture the previous year's license- We are able to capture the previous year's licensing fee, but we can't go back any further than that.
But if someone registers a dog today and doesn't register again for five years, with this change, we could go retroactively and say, okay, the dog's still alive, obviously, you didn't register for those periods. So we're not asking people to spend more money that they already signed up for when they bought a dog, we're just saying, we're holding them responsible for doing it retroactively if they didn't get there.
And as the ordinance is proposed, also makes an allowance for people, if you've moved out of the city, if you can show proof of that, then you're not gonna be charged for that year that you didn't have the dog in the city.
Whether or not they registered it within the city, just the proof that they didn't live in Gloucester, then there was no sort of cost to the city if you went for having dogs.
Right, so if someone was registered, if someone's dog was registered for a couple of years in Gloucester, they moved to Beverly for a few years, we're not gonna get them and they, their dog was registered in Beverly, we're not gonna charge them. They're like, they weren't late in those years, they were registered in another community.
So if they didn't register in another community, the only proof would be their own address having changed. Or, or if they don't have proof of registration, we're assuming they didn't move.
They need to prove that they were living in, that the dog owner was living in another community during that licensing period.
Makes sense now, thank you.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you. You said for non-neuter, non-spade dogs, how much were we going up to? I'm seeing 21 here.
It's an additional dollar, so it's 20 for neutered, 21 for non-neutered.
Okay.
And then there's the $2 processing fee, which includes automatically mailing the tag to, to the applicant.
Okay. And yeah, this is pretty much in line with other communities, even a little bit lower for non-neuter, non-spade dogs. So you may see me make an amendment to that in a few minutes. But anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? You wanna make an amendment, now's your time.
We haven't made the committee report yet.
Yep. Oh, sorry. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I have to close the public hearing. Closed.
On a motion by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Nolan, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter 4, Animals, Section 4-25, Dog License Fees and Penalties as follows. C, fees for dog license, male, female, neutered, spayed, each dog, delete 15, add 20. And male, female, non-neutered, non-spayed, each dog, delete 16, add 21. D, late penalty, the owner shall pay a penalty of delete 10, add 20, for any dog whose license fee has not been paid by April 30th of the current licensing renewal year. Any dog, delete, not licensed by the, for the previous year, will need to pay for a previous year's license as well as the late fee of $10. Add, who has been previously licensed in the city but has not been licensed for the previous years, will be required to pay the license fee and late fee for each year in arrears. Proof of residency in a different community during a licensing period will be required in order for the late penalty to apply. And I so move.
Not apply.
Not apply, sorry.
Motion made by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion.
I'd like to make an amendment to the male, female, non-neutered, non-spayed, each dog, delete 21 and add 25. 25 is the, the charge, looking at Beverly, looking at Salem, other cities and towns of our size have it at $25. I think that that would be more in line with area communities instead of 21, having a $25 for non-neutered, non-spayed dogs.
So your motion is to-
Second.
To change that?
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Benson, seconded by Counselor Worthley. On the amendment, discussion. Counselor Gilman.
Although I like getting more revenue, I think that the recommendation that was made by our city clerk is fair and reasonable, so I will not be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. First, I appreciate you making the motion, Counselor Benson. My question would be to clerk first. I recall you saying something that the fee that we're going to was in line, you said with PBD and Salem and maybe Beverly, that was for the late fee or for the actual fee to register?
The late fee.
Okay. In regards to the fee to register, unspayed dogs, can you confirm, I'm sure you can just cite it, but can you confirm that that's in line with other cities and towns?
The licensing fee? Hold on, just a minute, need to pull up my files.
If I may, I see Beverly is 25, Ms. Counselor.
We're comparing to, to other cities.
I don't need you to research, if you had that information handy, that would be helpful, but you don't need to do-
I don't have it handy at my fingertips, but I was just trying to see if I could find the PBD one as well.
Okay. I'm gonna trust Counselor Benson's math.
PBD is 15 for neutered and non-neutered is 25.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, looking at those communities, I think just a little bit more, and obviously, there's sometimes a need for a commitment in the community to have your animals spayed and neutered. And obviously, those that aren't may be breeders and they have that luxury, they're making plenty of money. So that's kind of why I just think we could be more in line with other communities.
I think that makes sense. One more question for the city clerk, if I may. Do you feel like there's some people, or a lot of people, who would say, I would be willing to register my dog at this price, but now at 25, I wouldn't do it? Do you feel like that's an economic barrier to some of the customers? Are you feeling like the ones who are paying, that's consistent with, I don't know, two lattes or something?
I think that you're always gonna have people that, that anytime a fee increases, they'll, they won't like that. I personally wouldn't like it if I was, you know, well, I do have a dog and I'll be paying more for my dog's license. But I think when you compare it, that this is a fee that was being charged in 2006, it's not unreasonable to go back to pricing that was 19 years ago, 18 or 19 years ago. I do know that in 2013, I recall the conversation at the time, that the fee was lowered to boost compliance. It boosts it temporarily, but it dips. And we've been pretty consistent with registration being between 2,300 and 2,500.
If I may, a couple more questions. Do you know how many dogs we have in, I'm sorry, may I?
Go ahead.
Do you know how many dogs we have in the city that either whether they're registered or not registered?
I don't know how many are not registered, but we're up to about 2,300 right now for registration.
Just last question on the math. We were at 2,250, then we're down for some reason to 15. Proposal that is for us is to go to 22, and Counsel Benson is saying go to 25. So had we not gone down to 15, we'd be looking at a $2.50 increase since 2006.
But we did.
What's that?
But we, but we did.
Oh, no, I did, but I'm saying if we hadn't gone down, we'd be still saying, okay, well that's what the price was and that's where the market was bearing. Okay.
Today's, well, Counselor Gilman or Counselor Majota?
Hasn't spoken.
Right. Questions for Grace. Do you have, do you know how many, what is it, non-neuter or non-spated spayed dogs that are registered compared to-
I did not pull that report. There's not, they don't represent a large number of dogs within the, the licensed dogs that we have. A lot of like puppies will come in that aren't neutered yet, they're getting registered as soon as the owner gets the puppy. And so they're not neutered at that time. We do have, you know, a number of dogs that aren't neutered or spayed, but the majority of them are.
Counselor Grace.
Also, just, there was a reminder of the necessity for registering your dog that came with the real estate bills this year, which reminded me, and I was late anyway, but I won't be next year. Thanks, Grace.
Counselor Gilman.
So on the amendment, just one last thing I'd like to say. We have to sit back right now and just think about how important it is that dogs do get licensed because it's a proof of rabies shot that really becomes a prerequisite. And if our dogs are at dog parks and our dogs are on again, off again for half the year at the beaches and someone gets bit and the dog is not licensed, that's a problem. And I just think too big of a jump right now. It can be a perception thing. I'm just, I'm more comfortable with the recommendation that Grace, our city clerk, had made.
Can I just say one thing about the neutered and non-neutered fees? We are required by law to charge a different fee for a neutered dog versus a non-neutered dog. When this law went into effect years ago, the city council and city clerk at the time just went with the $1 to comply with that law, but not to hit the residents too hard that had non-neutered dogs.
Counselor Majota.
I am going to support the amendment. I just think just a $4 increase per year is the price that some people who have pets or non-pets that spend at Starbucks or whatever, at restaurants, so $4 for a year, 365 divided by four, or whatever way, is, you're talking pennies for the year. So just to go up with our neighboring cities, I support this amendment.
Okay. Nope, you're done. Okay. I'm not gonna support this. I think that the clerk put a lot of work into putting forward a fair, fair fee adjustment, and I think that's what we should stick with. No matter what, you can say how little it is, it's still gonna be, it's going to be a, an issue, for sure. So I think that what has been proposed is fair, so.
Counselor Benson.
Also-
Don't repeat anything you've said before.
I'm not gonna repeat anything that I said before. I'm not, I'm not Kamala Harris, or, or Joe Biden.
That's enough.
But anyway, no, what I will say is that if you look at other communities, per, if failure to license a dog for each year is $50 in Beverly, that's one example. So again, like putting this really in line, you're talking about non versus, neuter versus non-neutered. So I think that it's important to point out just that, at other communities.
You, you made that point earlier, too.
Yeah, so, no, thank you.
Okay. City clerk, do you would like to?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, the $50 fee is a fee that the animal control is allowed by law to charge non-registered dogs. So our late fee is separate from that $50 fee. Like when animal control, usually yearly, sends out postcards to the list of non-registered dog owners who have registered in the past, if those dog owners don't register their dog, then animal control is allowed to charge them a $50 fine. And then when they come in to the city clerk's office to be paid, they're paying the, the dog license fee and the late fee.
Oh, the $50 has nothing to do with this.
Question on that.
Go ahead.
The example where animal control can charge $50 by state law, that's if they know they didn't register or if they find the dog unregistered? Like do they, can they just send a letter to the homeowner because they didn't register? Or do they, is this sort of an incident sort of related timing?
My understanding of it, as it relates to my office, is we provide them with a list of dog owners who were registered in the previous year but didn't register in the current year. Animal control sends out postcards to them, warning postcards saying, you need to register your dog within so many days or you're subject to a $50 fine. That $50 fine, if they, if that person doesn't come in within the, the time period that animal control gives them, animal control can send them the $50 ticket or citation. And then when that person, you know, hopefully pays that, they come to the city clerk's office and they're paying, again, the licensing fee and the late fee.
So it really is an incentive to get them to register. Got it. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, this doesn't require a roll call vote.
Can we do a roll call? Because I think we've got some dissenting and might be some math questions here.
This is on the amendment. Strictly on the amendment. We can do a roll call.
Counselor Gilman.
No.
Counselor Grace.
Yes.
Counselor Gross.
No.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Yes.
The vote is four in favor, two opposed, three absent. The motion on the amendment passes.
Okay, now on the main motion. Discussion's over. Do we have all those in favor? We don't need a roll call. Right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Six to zero, three absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing 25, Number 28, memorandum from the city clerk regarding proposed increases to inflammable license and registration fees.
So this is to be withdrawn.
Yeah, I, no, well, you should vote to, to withdraw it. I just wanted to say that this has already been vetted by ONA and BNF. But since that time, after I did my initial, you know, homework and research on licensing fees, I dug into our own flammable permits and realized that they needed more review. And passing this ordinance as written would have little effect on increasing revenue. And there, the way the ordinance is written, we're permitting things based on gallons, but we have permits that are based on, you know, pounds and other units of measurement. And so this, this ordinance as presented, which was modeled after the city of Haverhill, it just left too many gray areas. And so I'm asking that the council please withdraw it without prejudice so that it can take, it can be given more review that it, it needs unfortunately, before any action is taken on it.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Worthley. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The eyes have it. Oh, I forgot to have discussions, thought you guys might wanna beat this one to death.
There is no prejudice on ordinances, only on zoning ordinances, so we don't actually need that.
Continue. All right. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing 25, Number 29, council order 25, Number 21, Majota, amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking Prohibited at All Times, and Section 22-291, Towaway Zones, by adding Arlington Street, Easterly Side, from its intersection with River Road in a northerly direction for a distance of 45 feet.
Open the public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor? Counselor Majota.
Uh, yes, I've been working with the residents in that area, and I know that our former president and what for, Counselor Valgman, is very much aware of this no parking area in the area. Mostly, I know parking is tight there, but mostly this is for safety reasons and for the fire department to be able to get through with their fire trucks, ambulances, police. It's just a, a tight turn. I did provide photos and I think that Counsel Benson, it might be Googling it right now so we, if we can share a screen. I, mostly it's for safety reasons, just for the area. And this has been a long time coming for the resident at that area, so this is why I'm in favor of this, just for overall safety for the fire trucks, police, and ambulances to get through.
Anyone like to speak? Anyone else in favor? Would you like to speak in opposition? Do we have any communications?
We have none.
Questions from the counselors. I have a question. How many of the residents did you speak with?
I spoke to, um, two.
Yeah.
So when we tried to get this done several years ago, the two immediate butters on either side were both very much in support of this, and they're the ones that were most penalized by that tight corner because of where their houses were. So, so they were both very much in support of this. both very much in support of this. It's really impossible when people are parked at both of those spots.
Okay, so two people?
No one else is here.
Yeah, I know.
You know what I mean? So I don't.
No, I meant, but it's two people that you've heard from, no one else.
That was back then.
No one else in the neighborhood.
Correct. Just two.
Thank you. That's all. Thanks.
Questions?
Yeah, there weren't questions.
I would turn around. Going right. On River View. Right there. Yep. Yes, no, right there. So where that car.
Right here?
Yep. Where that car is parked on the right-hand side. Correct. Microphone.
I don't want to be at risk of repeating myself and being chastised by the council president. But anyway, it's all a good fun. But so.
Sorry.
But anyway, I just want to ask, you spoke to a couple, a couple folks, specifically the direct abutters to this spot. Have they, did they speak to you about their concerns here?
Again, the main concern is if a vehicle is parked right there, you know, if something were to happen, emergency, unfortunately, it's very difficult to take that right-hand turn. So the main reason why I've been speaking to the residents, those two residents who have bought this turn is just more for safety, so the vehicles can get through.
Okay.
And I, and I understand that through the past, we are taking some parking away. And I know this is a very tight area. Again, my main concern is for the safety of the entire street, and that's why I moved this forward.
Well, thank you. And I back up my other ward councillor, and this is your constituents, and I'll be supporting this.
Any other questions? Council Gilman, can you tell us why it didn't get through the last time? Or did it not get tried?
I think it was brought through with the recommendation for just no parking between signs and possibly not as changing the ordinance. And this motion by Councilor Majota takes care of the actual code. Does that answer your question?
Um, I guess.
Okay.
Any other questions? To close the public hearing, committee report.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter 22, traffic in motor vehicles, section 22-270, parking prohibited at all times, and section 22-291, towaway zones, by adding Arlington Street, Easterly Side, from its intersection with River Road in a northerly direction for a distance of 45 feet, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion.
I'm going to be, may I?
Yep.
I'm absolutely going to be supporting this. I've parked there before. I've measured it. It's really not safe. So I will be supporting this.
Okay. Right. Council Worthley.
Thank you, Council Majota, for bringing this forward. I will be supporting it as well. And I did a site visit there a couple of years ago. And I remember there being four residents that all came out and talked about the danger. And I think it's also one of those things where even if there weren't a large number of people saying they want this, the safety that gets improved affects everybody in the entire street, and in fact, the neighborhood too. So even if someone says, well, I like my spot there, and I'll run out real fast if a fire engine comes, not if they're sleeping, not if they're not home, not if, you know, they're, can't find their keys, whatever it is. This is going to make it safer for everybody. And again, the number I remember, there were four people, well, three people that saw a visit, someone who lived nearby would walk by. So there was four. And they may be the same two you talked to or not. But there's support for this. And even if there weren't a lot of support, it's the right thing to do for the safety.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Six to zero, three absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 25, number 30, council order 25, number 22, Grace, amend GCO chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors, and special events, section 11-5, fixed vending site-specific locations nine, and section A subsection four regarding 41 Huff Avenue parking lot.
Open the public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor? Councilor Grace?
Yeah, so this came about after a discussion with Director Hale about that parking area up by the, where the cupboard used to do business. And when the cupboard closed, sadly closed, it, it left kind of a desert up in that area for people at the beach or the playground, the ball fields, or, you know, just enjoying Stage 4 Park in general. And also, over the last two years, there, I have received, you know, requests from people to look into, can we get some more fixed vending sites for food trucks? You know, they're, they are, you know, a popular, a popular thing around here. And this seemed like the perfect place. The city owns the parking lot. It did not belong to the cupboard. The cupboard is gone. There are no other food trucks or concession stands or anything else up there. So it will definitely serve a need with, you know, our visitors and community members alike that spend time up at Stage 4 Park. And it helps small businesses as well.
Thank you. Anyone speak in opposition? Communications?
There are none.
Questions from councilors? Councilor Worthley?
Thank you. So firstly, I don't question that we have this additional space. I question, really to the clerk's office, I think, because you, permits, I believe, and licenses.
The permits are bid through the purchasing department. We issue the hawkers and peddlers license that the applicant needs in order to bid. And then we issue the fixed vending vendor badge. But the permit, really, the, how they get that spot is through purchasing.
Like an RFP that they would send out for people bidding on that spot is how it works?
Process, it's a process. It's all laid out in the ordinance.
Right, in chapter 11.
On how to bid.
So my question only is on timings. We've, yes, if we vote today, I think it's a 30-day window. That would mean we'd be only asking someone for the last couple of months of the, yes. Is there a way for us to waive the 30 days so that if someone wants to bid on that spot, one, the problem of having a food desert goes away sooner, the value the city gets from the bid happens sooner, and it's good for those businesses that are operating? Is there a way to waive the 30-day period?
That is in the charter. The 30 days, it's either in the ordinance or in the charter. The measures go into.
Charter.
No, but if you're creating an ordinance and you're wanting to, to waive the, when it goes into effect, unless it's an emergency.
1-10.
So, no, it's in the charter. 11A. It says, except otherwise provided by the charter, every adopted measure shall be effective at the expiration of 31 days after adoption by the city council, or a later date specified therein. So it's in the charter. Except in, no measure shall be adopted on its date, except in the case of special emergency involving peace, health, or safety of the people or their property.
I think my kids being hungry at the beach isn't quite that level of emergency.
But if we don't do it, we won't have it for next year.
Oh, I mean, I don't think that means we don't do it. I'm just thinking, if we do this, could we waive the 30 days? But seems like we can't. Only other question I have is, obviously, we can change our ordinances at any point, you know, through a process that we have. But if there were to be a time where someone were to buy the cupboard, or the owners of it decide to upgrade and operate again, we wouldn't necessarily, I don't think it'd be fair to say, oh, we put food vendors right outside your restaurant. And obviously, that's not before us today. But I wonder if there's some, I don't know, if it's a provision we add in, or if it's something we just deal with when it happens, if it happens. We don't need to decide today. But I don't think it personally would be fair to say, hey, here's a bill you can buy, and then, oh, by the way, there's four or five, whatever the number is, food trucks outside your restaurant. It could deter someone from buying the place. And that has larger implications from our tax base and from the operation of that business. If there's a way to put in a provision that said, you know, provided that there is no restaurant operating at that site, or?
That would all have to be vetted by legal. Not at this particular time.
Or it can create a bunch of food trucks that give people options. Like you go down to the city and it could be, you know.
Excuse me? Did you ask to speak?
But to that point, I'm glad there's food trucks. I'm glad there will be food trucks. I'm just saying, if, if the cupboard were to be, to say, we're opening up, and there's four food trucks out there, it would impact their business tremendously.
That bridge is going to have to be crossed when we come to it. But there's a.
There's no provision putting in. Okay, I get it. I'm good. I'll be supportive.
Councilor Gilman. Leave it on.
Yes, thank you. I've got a question. I believe that there's another type of vending truck, which is like the ice cream truck, that doesn't necessarily need to have a fixed vendor permit. They have a different type of permit where they're allowed to just drive through. And I was just thinking that that might be an option for this summer.
But that's not what, that would still have to be, but that's not a fixed vendor.
No, it's, I'm off topic. But if we have hungry kids and people going to that beach, it just seems like another opportunity.
There's not, I don't know if there's anything stopping ice cream trucks from stopping there.
As our ordinance is written, ice cream trucks have to follow the same rules and have the same prohibitions that a regular hawker and peddler does. So ice cream trucks are not supposed to be parking at beaches or going through Stage 4 Park. Historically, they have, and they do. But as our ordinance is written, they follow the same rules. The only different rule that they have is they get to be out later in the evening than a regular hawker and peddler does. And there is a separate permitting process for an ice cream truck through the police department.
Any more discussion on this? Part one. Okay, would you like to read the, did we read the committee recommendation? I did close it, didn't I? Oh, that was questions. Okay. Close the public hearing. Thank you.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors, and special events, section 11-5, fixed vending site-specific locations nine, and section A subsection four as follows. Section 11-5, fixed vending site-specific locations nine, A, the following are specific locations for vending, for delete, reserved, add, Huff Avenue, four spaces in the southern parking lot in the parcel of Huff Avenue, number 24, next to the southeast corner of the parcel of Huff Avenue, number 41, as designated by the Public Works Department. Vendors shall provide sufficient trash and waste receptacles that shall be emptied on a daily basis. Each vendor shall hold all local, state, and federal required permits and licenses as required, and shall provide proof of inspection by the Gloucester Health Department. And D, all vendors shall remove their vehicles and property from the fixed vendor location at the close of business each day. There shall be no overnight parking in the fixed vendor location. And I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Majota. Discussion. Nope.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad you brought it forward.
Thank you.
Council Benson?
Two. Either you or Grace, is that if this is approved, those vendors will have to bid for spots there? Is that what I'm understanding? And then, so what timeframe are they looking, if this is approved, what timeframe will those food trucks actually be in those spots, if that, if that question makes sense?
Throughout the year, someone can bid on a fixed vending location as long as a spot is open. But the, the spots open up, all of the spots open up in January.
Okay. So will we be looking at vendors being there this summer, or if this is approved, or?
Could be by August.
Okay. That's, that's it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Six to zero, three absent. Next public hearing.
Public hearing 25, number 31, council order 25, number 23, Grace, amend GCO chapter 22, traffic in motor vehicles, section 22-277, one-hour parking, by adding the southern parking lot in the parcel of Huff Avenue, number 24, next to the southeast corner of the parcel of Huff Avenue, number 41.
Open the public hearing. Those speaking in favor?
So this is just to, you know, kind of, to bring it one step further for the vending trucks in, is to provide one-hour parking in the, the front portion of that parking lot. That's, would be hopefully designed to, for people to utilize the trucks and not, you know, just park there for a day's recreation.
Anyone else wants to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Do we have any communications?
We have none.
Questions from the council? Council Worthley?
I, I wonder, how do we decide a one hour is the right amount of time for, to stop for a food truck?
Having a discussion with Director Hale and, and Legal.
They didn't debate 30 minutes, or?
Nope. That's so you can get dinner and dessert.
Council Benson?
I understand the food truck would be only parked there for an hour, or? Okay.
Customers.
You go there for an hour. Yep. Okay. That's, I, okay. Pardon my ignorance there, but that's okay.
Other questions? Clearly, there'll have to be a kiosk or something put there, really, to make this actually viable for one-hour parking. That is a city parking lot.
There's nothing painted in there right now. It was utilized by the cupboard for years. You know, kind of just people parking haphazardly. But there's no spots designated yet.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Committee report.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the Gloucester City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter 22, traffic in motor vehicles, section 22-277, one-hour parking, by adding the southern parking lot in the parcel of Huff Avenue, number 24, next to the southeast corner of the parcel of Huff Avenue, number 41, and I so move.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion made by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion.
I just want to make it maybe a little bit easier to understand why it has the, you know, southeast, northeast, northwest, whatever part is, because all of the land that the city owns at Stage 4 Park is number 24 Huff Avenue. So there was no way of kind of, you know, singling out that section as, as what we needed without kind of giving more of a, you know, specific parameters. So that's. of a, you know, specific parameters. So, that's why, that's like that.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, so I'll be supporting this. I do still wonder if one-hour parking, I mean, go get a hot dog, it's 10 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 maybe, but not an hour. And then, by reducing it potentially, we would allow for more customers for these food vendors if there's more turnover. So, you know, someone might just say, I'm gonna park here and go for a swim and come back in an hour. And that will take away from business. And we don't have someone patrolling it right now, so a 15-minute, 20-minute parking may make it simpler. I'm not gonna oppose it for that reason. I just don't wanna have us, having food vendors say, I'm not bidding there again, because people parked there and blocked access or took those spaces. The other thing I just wanna make a mention of is, people always forget Huff Ave, the whole street, is a private road with no residents on it. So, if we ever wanted to get that to be public, the city would have to be the one to apply to the City Council to make it a public road, so we get money for it. Hold that conversation another day, but Huff Ave is a private road. Anyways, I'll be supporting this.
Any other questions? Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Three absent. Next order, business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing, 25, number 32. Memorandum from the Chair of the Waterways Board regarding proposed amendments to fees collected from the public to amend GCO Chapter 10, Waterways Administration, Section 10-51, Regulation of Moorings.
Open the public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor? Chris, do you wanna speak on this? Or Donna? Honey, you need to raise your hand. Bring Dawn in. Okay, Dawn.
Thank you. Donna Crocker, Chair of the Waterways Board.
Address, address to.
Sorry, Seven Kirk Road.
Yep.
This, this was, you know, the Waterways Board has looked at all fees up and down in light of, you know, some budget issues. We looked at various, you know, communities up and down the coast with, you know, similar-sized harbors and setups. And this isn't the highest of the fees, and it isn't the lowest. It sits right in the middle.
All right. Is that it?
We, you know, we're looking at, many of these fees have an increase since 2017. Chain costs more money. Salaries cost more money. Everything costs more money. And we're, we're funding some of the Waterways Board budget out of the reserve funds, and that's not sustainable. So, we need, we need to come up with additional revenue.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Okay, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Communications?
There are none.
Questions from the council? Or the Chairman of the Waterways Board? No? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Committee report.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Nolan, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter 10, Waterways Administration, Section 10-51, Regulation of Moorings, as follows: Section 10-51, Regulation of Moorings, C, Applications. Applications for new permits shall be submitted on forms provided by the Harbor Master. Applicants shall be placed on waiting lists by location preferred in order of their receipt. The Harbor Master shall keep the waiting list updated by requiring applicants who wish to maintain their position on the waiting list to file an annual renewal prior to the last business day of December each year. The Harbor Master shall publicly post the waiting list at the Harbor Master's office and shall file a copy of, same with the City Clerk's office, on April 30th of each year. The fee for such renewal shall be strike 10, add 15. Failure to timely file the annual renewal shall result in the applicant's removal from the waiting list, provided, however, that an applicant may, prior to the last business day of February of the following year, request reinstatement to his or her position, previous position on the waiting list by filing with the Harbor Master a request for reinstatement, together with a late fee of $50, for a total of $60. E, fees. The fee for each type of mooring shall be established by the City Council. Fees for personal mooring shall be charged by the length of vessel at the rate of strike eight, add 10, per foot for city residents and taxpayers at the rate of strike 10, add 1,250 per foot for non-residents. The fee for transient mooring shall be $200 each. A daily fee of $70 shall be charged every vessel that utilizes a municipal mooring used for transient boats operated by the Harbor Master. The daily rental fee for transient boats shall include the services of the Gloucester launch during regular service hours. Fees for 10A float permit shall be in the amount of strike 1, add 120, per square foot, up to a maximum of strike 400, add 500. Fees for the use of Gloucester launch shall be $10 per person, per one-way trip, with children 12 years of age or younger, free. A seasonal, a season pass for permitted mooring holders within the boundaries of the Gloucester Harbor launch will, with unlimited daily use for up to four passengers, will cost $300, $350. Permitted mooring holders may purchase a book of 20 ride tickets for $140. Each ticket is good for one person, one way. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Worthley. I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to amend the last $60 of Section 10-51C, where it says $60, it should say a total of $65, because the fee went up from $10 to $15. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by, motion made by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Benson, right there, $65. Go ahead. Counselor Gilman.
Can you speak to why you're making that extra $5?
Because it, the, the late fee, the fee, the fee for renewals on your wait list is being changed from $10 to $15. And then, there is a late fee of $50, which, then the $50 and the $10 added up to 60. But now, if this is adopted, $50 and $15 is $65. Any other questions on the amendment? Yes, Dylan, seconded the amendment.
Question, amendment. Didn't we have this come through Budget and Finance with the same exact error, too?
Yeah, we corrected it there, too.
We did.
They're reading from the, anyway.
O and A, but do, does Budget and Finance need to have a recommendation on this at the same time?
We did. We did make a recommendation on it, and that was actually noted, I think, maybe in our, on the, in our agenda, I mean, in our packet, that B and F had actually looked at it.
Voted unanimously for it.
And voted unanimously for it, yes. So, on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Three absent. Now, on the main motion, discussion. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it, six to zero. Three absent. Thank you very much, Chris and Donna. That concludes our public hearings for tonight's program. Now, we have next order of business, Madam Clerk.
For council vote, old business, correction of a Scrivener's error in the motion on page one of the May 14, 2025, Budget and Finance, FY 26, Budget Review Minutes.
Read the motion. Counselor Gilman.
I move to amend the May 14, 2025, Budget and Finance, Fiscal 26, Budget Review Minutes, to create, to correct a Scrivener's error in the motion on page one by striking, seconded by Counsel Worthley, and adding, seconded by Counsel Gilman. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
The eyes have it, six to zero. Three absent. All right, next order, business, Madam Clerk.
A discussion regarding City Council holding public hearings quarterly on proposed GCO traffic amendments.
Okay, so it has been proposed that since we've had several of these come along, and it's costing us quite a bit of money, that if we can bundle them into public hearings, considering most of them are not necessarily in emergency need, if we can bundle them, we will save a significant amount of time and money to be able to do this. So, the floor is open for discussion. Counsel Benson.
I will be supporting this, Council President. It makes total sense. Just my, my quick question, if there was, say, a pressing one that's like, say, I, just an example, I put something forward, I'm like, to you and Grace, this needs to get forward now. We need to do something now. This is urgent. Would that be possible?
Well...
That makes sense, I'm just thinking, but...
Here's an example, there was one, Gorton's Crosswalk.
Yep.
That needed, and somebody had gotten hit, and Gorton's had requested. That was kind of an emergency safety issue. So, something like that. But we all feel that, you know, when we put something forward, that it has a certain urgency attached to it. So, we have to have some restraint and patience if we're going to do this. And it would be more like, there's no point in doing it once a month, because we only meet twice a month. So, we wouldn't really get a whole lot. So, it'd have to be like quarterly.
No, I think that makes perfect sense. I will be support, I support this. And what you just said is what I was thinking. Some sort of like urgent thing, like comes up, and I'm like, hey, it could be in my ward. We need to get this forward, so...
Could be anywhere, yep.
It could be anywhere, but I'm just using my example. Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
Yeah, I, I agree with the sentiment. I think it's fiscally responsible to batch them together, so we don't have to pay a heck of a lot of money for the ads. So, I like this idea. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I support the sentiment. I just have some questions about the practicality of doing this. As far as I understand it, we'd have a quarterly, we're talking about first quarter being January 1st to March 30th. And, no, sometimes people have, first quarter is...
Yes, because that runs with our term.
And, so, all of the council orders would need to be approved by Legal before they get put to the council? And what those deadlines would be like? Would we say, okay, a month before the end of that quarter?
Those deadlines wouldn't change, because they wouldn't want them stockpiled up against them, whereas like, all right, we're, you know, it's, you know...
No, what I'm saying is like, so let's say...
March 15th.
Let's say it was December 26th, because I'm not gonna work on Christmas Day, right? But December 26th, I send something in, and that quarter begins January 1st. It only gives Legal a couple of days, so they might get to it a week later. Then it waits a whole another four months before, no, another six months before it gets to the council.
Four months. Three months, another three months. Quarter.
The start of the quarter.
Quarter. If you send it in January 26th, it's gonna be in the next year, in the next quarter.
April.
Um, yes, March 30th. March 30th, first, first meeting of April.
And?
It would be, that we just want, that's the advertisement for public hearing. That's not necessarily going to standing committee, but it's the, so that they're advertised altogether in batches.
So, and then, this, would it, would it change the review that Traffic Commission does?
The review of the Traffic Commission? Well, that would come in line with when it wound up going to O and A, you know, after it comes out of Legal, after it comes out of Legal.
Am I understanding it correctly? There would be no change in the council process, just that the hearings...
Correct.
Would be, so if you put it in January 1st, and it got through a process, and it was March 1st, there still would be no advertisement till the next quarter, for example?
Well, if it took that long to get through that process...
I meant Legal and Traffic Commission, O and A.
Yeah, but if it got put in in January, and then, you know, what's Legal taking, the 30 days or something is their deadline, so they're 30 days.
And Traffic Commission.
Traffic Commission and O and A, you know...
Maybe March, but you wouldn't have it till a certain time with all the other ones that are being held.
Have them, so it's just so that they'd all be advertised in a batch. They could be different dates, you know, so that they're not all, you know, we don't have 15...
Oh, so you don't have all the hearings at one time. We're advertising for the dates that the hearings are gonna be held.
So, you would have, you know, instead of two or one advertisement, we would have six, you know, on one date.
In the paper?
In the paper.
But the hearings aren't gonna have...
The hearings would have to happen on the date that it's advertised for.
Right, but they don't have to all be the same day.
Yes, they do. If they're going to be advertised, the same advertisement would have to have the same hearing date. Yes.
Not if you continued, open and continued.
Well, you can, but, right. Yes, it could be opened, opened and continued, yes.
My worry is if there's one issue that's gonna bring a big crowd out, and you get 17 others, whatever number, backed up, 10 others, three others, then...
Make the big crowd wait till last, so they have to listen to everything.
Right. So...
But, yeah, it's, it would be, the normal process would follow, and then the advertisement, they would, they would gather the batches and then advertise them, you know, in batches. So, it's not just...
It'd be a bigger ad, but less frequently.
Bigger ad, but less frequently, but not necessarily that much bigger, and not, not necessarily that much more intense.
Council President could decide to open and continue and say, here's the three we're gonna do for the next three.
If necessary, absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, then, there's really not a big change, except for the size and the frequency of the ad?
Correct, yep.
I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Counselor Gilman. Now, remember, this is all discussion, and...
No, I understand. So, will, if, if we, if we say...
What I'm saying is, don't hold my feet to the fire, what I'm saying.
So, if this is something that we would agree to, would we, would the process be just to update our rules of procedure? Would this be in rules of procedure?
No, not necessarily, no.
So, where would it be?
This would be just as a protocol for right now. I mean, if, if in January, when the new council comes in, they wanna, and they re-up their rules of procedure, wanna add this in, they can. But I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing to see how it goes.
So, we're sampling it now, and if, and if the new council felt in January, then they would go and update the rules of procedure.
If they feel it needs to be in there, or it can just be a practice.
Good luck.
Counselor Benson.
Last question from me on this would be, so the timeframe, so we would be, if, say, a constituent asks for a request, and I, we put forward this, this traffic amendment, like, the timeframe, how long would we be looking at? Like, so we know, just for the record, and then, obviously, we can talk more about this as we go forward on this, but what would be the timeframe? So, say, I put something in, I'm just gonna use myself as an example, put something in, how long would the constituent have to wait for this amendment?
It all depends upon how close it is to the end of the quarter. Now, if it comes in January 1st, then it's not gonna go to public, you know, well, it's not gonna go to public hearing till later, but if it's in mid-February, and it manages to get through everything, and it gets to there. So, you're just gonna have to give the expectation that we're bundling these together, and I will keep you updated on what the public hearing date will be.
Yep. No, thank you.
So, everybody's okay with this? Do we need, we don't need to take a vote on this, do we? Huh? Everybody, do we need to have a, does, would everyone feel comfortable with the vote, or do we, are we...
Would we vote, change the rule of procedure?
Yeah, no, we're not voting on that.
That's what was before us, so...
So, we're just, we're just, everybody's comfortable with, yep. Okay, great.
All right, councilor's request to the mayor. Council Gilman.
Mine is not a request, it's an accolade. I just wanted to comment on what an amazing event the city pulled off, the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Bunker Hill reenactment this past weekend. First of all, a huge shout-out to Ringo Tar for being the point person for the city responsibilities. Thanks to Mike DeCosta, Maritime Gloucester, for his coordination at sea, David Dow for the coordination of the cannons that were on land, all the volunteers in yellow t-shirts, and to Mayor Berger and his team, Gloucester Police Department, Fire Department, Harbor Master, and DPW for all their work, and the Mass Mudders for their help with the satellite lots. Our city pulled off an absolutely perfect event with over 20,000 visitors and residents, and it was just amazing, and I was, I was humbled by what a great event this was. It just, it was, it was great, just a really good, it takes a village type of thing. So that's all, I just wanted to be clear that that was just awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grace.
Um, yeah, a couple things, first of all, I'm just, this kind of, this is for the community in general, you know, with our, summer has finally arrived, and we actually had a Saturday without rain, and there's been a lot of scuttlebutt on social media about the carry-in, carry-out policy, and, you know, like it or not, this is what we have in this city, and people that are trying to, you know, that are, are getting people into arguments on social media, I just put this out there to you, that maybe put your time and energy and efforts to something more productive and volunteer for the Clean City Commission, get some yellow bags from the DPW and help to clean up the mess, and make an example to our visitors and our residents alike. And then my request to the mayor is, I'll repeat, it's gonna continue to repeat biweekly, and that is enforcement. We have a real issue in this city with enforcement in regard to parking regulations. With the Fiesta beginning tomorrow, that's gonna be even more important to make sure that people are parking where they are legally supposed to park, so that we don't hinder any emergency vehicles that need to get through and help with any issues that may arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Majota.
Um, yes, I just wanna thank the, to piggyback what, um, Council Gilman said, is I also wanna thank the Police Department and the, and all those involved to keep everyone safe. I think the event went out, went without a hitch, which was amazing, and my request to the mayor's office is to have more enforcement during, in the quarries. There was an incident this weekend where, you know, residents just get upset, we can just have more police enforcement around that area, just for everyone's safety, that would be great, thank you.
Council Worthley.
How many absences, usually you have to wait a lot longer in the, in the meeting. I'd like to echo what Council Gilman's saying, the volunteers, DPW, the Police Department, the mayor's office, all the organizations that participated in that spectacular event should all be commended. Also echo what Council Majota's saying, if we can enforce the quarry rules earlier in the season, the message gets delivered to the people who are coming regularly and violating those rules, so hopefully, step up a little more there, obviously, they were very busy last weekend. I'd like to give a thank you to Councilor Grace, I noticed in our minutes, in our hearings today, you've done a real round robin of all the committees, filling in for absences, so I saw O and A seconded by Councilor Grace, or offered P and D and Budget and Finance, so thank you for, you've done them all, and thank you for doing that, it makes a difference when you have alternates and alternate, alternates, and sometimes you're on the list, and that's a big help. Buena Fiesta, right? Over here. That's it for me, thank you.
Council Benson.
Okay. Uh, thank you, I would echo all of my fellow counselors in having a truly remarkable weekend, and it was great to be hanging out with the council president quite a bit on Saturday, I think I got a worse sunburn than him, though. But anyway, it was a, and that's why I was not there on Sunday, but it was a privilege, and it was also a privilege to meet Council General of the British Consulate, David Clay, who came from the consulate general's office in Boston, and it reminds us of a relationship born out of conflict, but has become truly a special relationship between our two nations, a reminder of the, tomorrow at Burnham's Field, the background growers, they're gonna have the, it's going on from June 18th to October 15th, every Wednesday from 2:30 to 6:30. A couple of things for the mayor, I'd like to look at getting some pedestrian safety dummies slash signs placed in some of the worst sidewalks, particularly in Ward 2, around Maplewood Avenue, Washington Street, also looking to repair our roads and sidewalks on Liberty Street, and finally, for the upcoming Fiesta, for family and friends that live out of Gloucester, to your family, to those that live in Gloucester, I urge you to let folks take the train, check the schedules out, it's gonna be really congested, so if folks are visiting, take the train down to visit the Fiesta, and also really respect the resident-only parking, specifically, my constituents are gonna be really burdened this weekend, up and down the fort, that are already dealing with horrible parking conditions, but really respect the resident-only parking in and around the areas where the Fiesta is specifically. Thank you.
Council Gilman.
Thank you. So I actually spoke with the mayor about this about four days ago, but the issue that I asked for help with, and he said he would work on it, is we have so many people recklessly riding their mopeds, their electric bikes, everything without helmets at night, after, after nine o'clock when it's dark. My husband, my son and I went for dinner at Yeller's the other night, there were four bicyclists doing wheelies around in a serpentine in front of the tavern going down the street. I've seen joggers, Tony at our section of Washington Street, from the Inniscore Village Church to the pedestrian bridge, joggers with headphones, running on the right side of the road with the traffic instead of against it, and I just, and, and so in talking to the mayor, he said he would speak to the Police Department for possibly doing some regular updates on their social media page to talk about safety issues for these different types of matters, particularly where school is out on Thursday. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that because I think it's, we've got some huge issues out there right now, people just not obeying any of the rules of the road, and being dangerous, so that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Also, I don't know if you guys mentioned the big thank you to the reenactors who, who suffered, um, they were so good, they were so happy to talk to you, they were informative, knowledgeable, it was quite, we were, we were quite lucky and privileged to be host of this, this 250th year reenactment, and they were all so pleased with our site and with Gloucester. It was really quite a, quite a coup for, for the city with everyone around, around the state who were paying attention to how that whole thing got pulled off, and how, what, what a great sight, and it could not have been done without all the volunteers, and without Ringo hurting everyone and calling in a million favors, and, and making sure that, that everything was delivered on time, and, and set up, and ready to go for Saturday morning, it was, it was quite the spectacular show, and I was very, very happy that I could, that I could go, and applying sunscreen is the reason that I didn't get so sunburned and wore a hat, so take that, you know, you young folks have to learn. Anyway, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Council Worthley, seconded by Council Majota, all those in favor?
Aye.
Six in favor, zero opposed, three absent, good night.